All right, I now call it February 20th. Forest Lake Area Schools Regular School Board Meeting to order. Please join me while we recite the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam President, would you please take the roll call of attendance?
Yes. Okay, Member Revoline.
Here.
Member Corcoran.
Here.
Member Haglund.
Here.
Member Antonson is here. Member Castle.
Here.
Member Christensen.
Here.
Member Tyson.
Here.
Everybody's here.
All right, that brings us to the approval of the meeting agenda. We entertain a motion to approve the agenda. So move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the agenda this evening? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. We have an approved meeting agenda. That brings us to scheduled and unscheduled visitors. I do have a couple of green cards, so prior to that, I would just like to say a few words leading into the public comment section of tonight's meeting. We feel that public comment is a very important aspect of our community interactions. As a result, we have added that opportunity tonight despite the common practice of not doing so in a mid-month meeting. We would like to remind commenters that this is an opportunity for them to address the board, and it is non-interactive. Commenters are given three minutes to speak. We ask all to be respectful of that time limit. The clerk will give notification to the speakers as their time is expiring, and the chair will strike the gavel once your time has expired. In accordance with our green card procedure, we ask speakers to keep their comments relevant to the agenda item that they would like to speak on. We also ask that speakers remain respectful and use language that is appropriate to a wide audience, which includes our early childhood students. Remember, addressing the board during a publicly held meeting is a privilege. It is not guaranteed under any statute or constitutional provision. I noticed tonight that there are multiple speakers who would like to speak on Agenda Item 6.3, addressing the district's licensed personnel. Prior to comment, I'd like to provide some clarification on some of these roles, specifically the non-curricular assignments. Forest Lake Area Schools provides a limited open forum for all student groups. This means that we provide equal access for all student groups regardless of content. Under this model, the board does not encourage or reject any student group. The role of the board and the action that we are taking tonight is to approve the funding for the advisor, nothing more, nothing less. I ask speakers to keep their comments germane to the agenda item that they are speaking on. Comments that deviate from the topic are inappropriate and subject to being called out of order by any board member. With that being said, we appreciate both your attendance and your comments this evening. That brings us to, I just shuffled up the cards, so they are in a random order here. I will call off the commenter by their first name and their last initial. So first on the list is Kate L.
All right, I will keep it under three minutes, I'm sure. And I wrote it, so sorry for reading it, just to make sure I keep succinct. I am a parent in this district, and I value the community-building work that our schools take on. And I want to thank the teachers who spend extra time away from their families to facilitate these clubs. And thank you to the school and the school board, even though it's just for the funding, but thank you in general, for recognizing the value of these clubs on tonight's consent agenda. Affinity clubs are an important part of everyone belongs. Because that doesn't mean that we are all the same, it means there is space for everyone. I'm sure we all agree that we always want to look for how to grow, how to include, and how to make schools more safe for everyone. I'm glad to have the opportunity to publicly thank everyone who is working towards a district where everyone feels welcome. Because my kids have lost friends, and our district has lost students because those students didn't feel safe, and they moved, to a district that is further along in the path of inclusion and equity. I kind of wish I had these clubs when I grew up. I think I would have understood more and knew more about the world when I moved away from home. So again, as a parent and a community member, I value these opportunities for our kids, so thank you. And I hope to see more approvals in the coming months and years, because the more tools and safe places to learn and grow we give our kids, the better. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kate. That brings us to Mary Beth H.
Good evening, Superintendent Massey and members of the board. Thank you for allowing me time to speak tonight on the topic of school clubs. My name, as stated, is Mary Beth Higgins, and I have served the Forest Lake District for 25 years. As a co-advisor of BIPOC at the middle school, I wanted to thank each and every one of you for your leadership and wisdom on providing such wonderful opportunities for our students. By offering a wide variety of clubs, you allow space for student voice as well as parent choice. So thank you for honoring our students and their families in this way. Because of your commitment to these clubs, it is apparent to me that this board values the school-to-home connection, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Mary Beth. That brings us to Bree A.
Hi, I'm Bree Ackerman. I'm happy to be here, thank you. I've been teaching at Forest Lake for about 10 years now, and I'd like to voice my full support for all of our affinity groups. I proudly ran two of these affinity groups over the years, and I firmly believe that these groups are an important investment in our schools, diverse communities, and future generations of leaders while also promoting a supportive and inclusive educational environment for everyone. Affinity groups such as the BSU, Latinx, Mungan Asian Culture Clubs, and others create spaces for students to feel validated, supported, and supported. Affinity groups allow students to talk about what is going on in school and in life. Sometimes discussions came up about how to handle hate speech, sharing history, and building support networks to tackle issues faced by our students. It's impossible for staff to properly address a problem if we don't know it exists. Opportunities like this can happen organically because there is a place for students to share what they need and how to meet these needs. This promotes inclusion by breaking down the barriers that promote segregation in the first place. Student affinity groups also serve as platforms for students to share their knowledge with each other and to take on leadership positions. For example, one of my clubs discuss history, culture, and current events. We worked with the Latinx group to create posters to raise awareness that cultures are not costumes for Halloween. We also participated in a march to raise awareness for murdered and missing Indigenous relatives in February a few years ago, after learning about this movement. When affinity groups are able to work together and with other groups across the state, the students learn about how to work together for a common goal as an empowering opportunity. It also builds opportunities for collaboration to build a better world for everyone. Affinity groups also organize events and showcases to share their knowledge, experiences, and perspectives to the rest of the school and the community at large. These events are open to everyone and promote understanding, acceptance, and unity within our diverse school and broader community. Groups like BSU put on public showcases for every year for Black History Month. Other groups raised awareness for being a better ally. Or other groups helped APAC organize a winter storytelling event one year. Events like these don't promote segregation, they provide opportunities to build bridges to promote inclusivity, practice leadership skills, while also creating a positive impact on our schools and the broader community. Investing in our inclusion programs in means investing in our future. Our schools and the affinity groups offer opportunities for developing future leaders at all levels to organize events, problem-solve, and collaborate with others. This fosters a culture of inclusivity and ensures that the next generation is well-prepared to move us towards a brighter and more inclusive future. I strongly encourage you guys to consider the importance of investing in our inclusion programs for current and future rangers. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bree. That brings us to Jenny O.
Hi, I'm Jenny O'Donnell. I'm one of the ELL teachers at Forest Lake High School. I came here eight years ago from a career in sales because I really wanted to work with kids. About a year after I started, some kids at the school asked me to be their advisor for the Black Student Union. I've been working with them ever since and watching them go off to college and be successful. On January 16th, three brave students spoke to the school board on behalf of their club and explained what we do in our meetings, how the BSU benefits these students, our community, and that BSU is open to all students. These students feel that they went unheard by some members of the board. They took offense at the use of the word segregation and at the suggestion that these students are segregating themselves. From the other students, the word that should be used is celebration, not segregation. In fact, we will be celebrating Black History and Culture at the Black History Showcase with music, dance, history, and trivia on Wednesday, February 26th, at 6:00 PM in the high school auditorium, and please join us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to Tim N.
Hello, members of the school board, Dr. Massey, and other esteemed guests. My name is Tim Nukem. I'm a community member and parent in the district. I have two daughters who attend in Scandia Elementary, Forest Lake Middle School, and Forest Lake High School. Both have graduated and are now pursuing their college degrees. I'm also an English-language arts teacher, speech coach, and theater director at the high school in my 28th year with the district. I'm here this evening to speak in support of Agenda Item 6.3 and the positive work being done by all of our affinity groups and the staff that advise them. These affinity groups directly address our school district's strategic learning belief statements, including "educational equity is the foundation for everything we do." "All students deserve highly qualified, high-performing educators advising them." "Each individual has value for their diverse talents, backgrounds, and cultures." The affinity groups are dedicated to upholding those belief statements. In addition, the affinity groups fulfill Goal Number Six of the Strategic Learning Plan, which states, "We strive to create a safe, inclusive learning environment that fosters personal well-being for all students." On a more personal and anecdotal level, I have observed these positive benefits of having all of the various affinity groups in our schools. As a speech coach and theater director, I spent a significant amount of time at the high school after 3:30, and the majority of the affinity groups meet on Thursday afternoons when the activity buses offer, making these groups more accessible to all secondary grades. On Thursday afternoons, the halls and classrooms where the affinity groups meet are alive with hope, with positivity, and with excitement for being in school with their community. In addition, the representation of the diversity that our school encompasses is most visible and engaged on Thursday's afternoons when the affinity groups are meeting. Through these groups, our diverse student body finds a place where they are welcome and their voices are validated. So today, I ask you to vote in favor of the good work that the students involved with these groups and the staff that advise them are doing. A vote to defund any of these groups' advisors is a vote to diminish our strategic learning plan. It's a vote against hope, against positivity, and against inclusive culture. Please vote to continue to fund these programs and their advisors and make my daughters and our current students proud to be graduates of Forest Lake Area Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
That brings us to Claire L.
Good evening. My name is Claire Luger, and I'm a district parent, a product of the school district myself, and a special education teacher in a neighboring district. I began my teaching career here, and I am well aware of the incredible staff talent we have. I'm here to speak about the importance of the district's student affinity groups identified in Agenda Item 6.3. These groups give students a sense of belonging and community. It is disappointing to hear groups of such importance irresponsibly characterized as segregation or dismissed altogether. No one wants racism or bigotry in our schools, but if we don't name the problem and continue to work to address it, we will continue to lose students who struggle with feelings of belonging. Affinity groups are different from the one-to-one support students receive with our incredible counseling teams. They provide spaces where students can talk about things like celebrations that are culturally relevant to them, plan school events that educate the community, like the Black History Month celebration in a week, and as a community, navigate experiences that are unique to them. All students, all students deserve to feel seen and feel pride in who they are. Affinity groups are an evidence-based strategy to mitigate harm. There's no shortage of studies and empirical evidence that validate that. All of the qualitative, quantitative, peer-reviewed research conducted by education professional organizations and higher education institutions like Harvard and Princeton confirm the same thing. Affinity groups increase academic success, attendance, and enrollment retention by creating a culture of inclusion, cultural awareness, and leadership skills, along with reducing feelings of isolation and improving mental health. Isn't that what we want for all of our students? Student and family testimony also validate the function of student affinity groups. In this room alone, we've heard no shortage of students explain how affinity groups impact their educational experience in terms of empowerment, community, and academic success. As an educator and district parent, I know firsthand how important these groups are to students from historically marginalized groups. Based on feedback and parent-guarding consent for student membership, there is a clear mandate for these groups in our community. Every public school district in the state of Minnesota and its school board members have an ethical and legal obligation to be responsive to all students within their boundaries and invest in the academic achievements of its students, and Forest Lake is certainly no exception. Affinity groups in our secondary schools literally support every single strategic goal of our school district, not just Goal Number Three, which states that we will identify and transform systems that contribute to inequities, or Goal Number Six, that states that the district will create safe and inclusive learning environments. I look forward to the continued funding of these groups by this board because there is no tangible benefit from not doing so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Claire. I believe that concludes our scheduled and unscheduled visitors. I don't have any other green cards left with me anyway, and I don't see anybody else with one. So that brings us to reports, and we will start with the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee Director Ward.
Ms. Weiberg or Mr. Ward? There we go. Great.
Yes, they got stuck in the back. Thank you for being with us tonight.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Massey, I'm with co-chairperson Heidi Weiberg with our annual report on Forest Lake's American Indian Education Program. So to start, I'd like to address the goal. Our goal is to provide equitable, intentional, and targeted educational opportunities to every American Indian student while focusing on cultural identity and pride. The program purpose, I wanted to highlight just a couple of them. It's to increase academic achievement, increase the graduation rate, and to improve the school climate for American Indian students in a culturally appropriate manner. Continuing on, all children are ready for school, all racial and economic achievement gaps between students are closed, and that all students are college and career-ready. So when you consider the American Indian Education Program, you have to look at this from two different sources. We have both the federal and the state. The federal one dates back to starting the program in the year 2010, and they give a smaller portion of our budget. So this is the first part, and we were approached by some members, American Indian members of the community, which included the Lyons family, the Holden-Dufresne family, and was helped shepherded by community native elder Michael Herth. And with that, we moved into the federal programming, which included to grow out of the special trust relationship between the US government and American Indian tribes secured in treaties between sovereign nations. So again, pulling out a couple of the highlights with this, it's to meet the unique educational and culturally-related academic needs, to ensure that American Indian students gain knowledge and understanding of Native communities, languages, tribal histories, traditions, and cultures. And then finally, in the last bullet, I'd like to point out some of that, to ensure staff members have the ability to provide culturally-appropriate and effective instruction and supports to our Native students. The other bucket comes from the state of Minnesota. This is a much more recent program and support that was provided, starting about 10 years ago, and it folded in and supported the federal program. And so it was allowing the district and the schools to scale up and enhance American Indian education, again, culturally and academically tailored to American Indian students, and with the ultimate goal to reach their full potential within their school communities through meaningful, equitable, and targeted educational experiences.
In 2023, we adopted the land acknowledgement, and I'd like to just read it for us now. So this is Forest Lake Area Schools Land Acknowledgement. We acknowledge that Forest Lake Area School District 831 operates on the traditional ancestral territories of the Ojibwe and Wapakute Band of the Dakota Nation. We collectively stand as visitors and relatives on these homelands. We honor the Indigenous peoples who have stewarded the land through the generations and their ongoing contributions to this territory from time immemorial, seated in the treaties of 1825 and 1837. We acknowledge the historical and ongoing injustices that have been committed against these nations, and we wish to interrupt this legacy, beginning with truth-telling and action, and ending with reconciliation. We continually support and advocate for the Native nations in this territory and affirm their tribal sovereignty. We look forward to fostering a greater understanding of and stronger ties with the Dakota and Ojibwe people on the land we currently call Forest Lake, Minnesota.
So to be able to have these kinds of programs, one of the things that the school district and Native community have to forge together is an American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. APAC serve in an advisory role to the district and help to ensure that American Indian students are receiving culturally-relevant and equitable educational opportunities. And for your reference, I put in the statute that relates to that. So the committee works collaboratively with the district on the Title VI Program Plan and Budget, the State American Indian Educational Aid Plan and Budget, and that's where we're presenting the compliance vote later in the meeting, the District Achievement and Integration Plan, and voting on the compliance. So we have a series of growth goals, we have more specific ones for each of these categories, but the categories are about increasing the visibility of American Indian, the program itself, expand program services to include each of the elementary sites, expand the American Indian Parent Advisory Council or Committee, increase capacity for school staff and American Indian education staff and families, and to increase academic success for Native students.
Okay, so part of our parent group, we meet monthly, and all of our meetings, we begin with community building, and so we share a meal together, and we build community by just sharing stories and building our relationships, and then we go into our agenda where we set goals for the month, and then we have longer-range goals that we work towards. We sent out a parent survey, which was new this year, and the purpose of that parent survey was, again, to increase awareness to all of our families, but then to also increase participation and to see what our families wanted for goals. And one of our most successful opportunities that we have right now going on is cultural beating classes, which that started last year, and it has grown to occur twice monthly, and it extends into the summer. And we have, on average, 11 to 17 participants, ranging in ages from first grade through adults, and you can see some of the beautiful work that they have going there.
They're currently meeting right now?
And they're right, yeah. So we don't have a lot of our community here because they're at the ed center. So we also have five family fun nights. That is an increase. Last year, we had five, and then this year, we also have five going on. Our first one was an Ojibwe language game night, and then tomorrow night, actually, we're going to have an Ojibwe Star Story Night that actually has a craft also with Aurora Borealis going on. We're going to have a winter storytelling activity coming up in March, and then Dreamcatcher Activity, which is going to be led by Theo. That activity is going to also have our first-ever make-and-take activity attached to it, where we're going to offer our families who can't be there, they're going to have the opportunity to sign up to take that activity home and have a QR code attached to it, where we're going to have a video of Theo doing the activity with us that are able to be there so that they can extend it to those that can't join us, again, to try to increase participation. And then our biggest event is always our honoring ceremony, where we celebrate the academic achievements of all of our Native students, and this year, we have 12 seniors who will be graduating. And all of the board members, administrators, any teachers are always invited to celebrate all of those academic achievements with us, and that will occur on May 5th this year. We have our largest delegation going to MEA this year, which will occur on March 19th down at Mystic Lake, and that's an opportunity for us to attend a conference, to network, to gain ideas and insights, and bring those ideas back not only to our group but also to the district. And then this year, we hope to put together a summer activity package because, as you know, during the summer, it's hard to get everybody together, but we want our families to continue to build connections and cultures, not only in Forest Lake but also to the greater Native community in Minnesota. Part of our work, as Brad said, is to also to support the district, and so we're working with MDE on the Dreamcatcher Program, which helps to train our school staff so that we can be more culturally-aware while we're in the intervention and special education identification process. So right now, we're in the planning phase of that, and that is an E-12 initiative, which I think is really exciting. And then this year, we also had another E-12 initiative where we celebrated Indigenous Peoples' Day across the entire district, and that included teacher PD and lessons that occurred across the district for everybody. And then we also continue to support and increase authentic voice and cultural items that are connected to lessons and state standards when and where they're appropriate. We also, this year, had a grant with Little Free Libraries, and we have a main focus on Indigenous-authored and diverse books for our families but also in our communities. And we have a mobile cart that we have at our family events and also our beating class, but then we also have one that is going to be placed at the ed center for all of the community members to be able to take, and you can see some of the books that are pictured there. And then this is one of the most recent lessons that is going out to third-grade teachers. So in all of the Minnesota standards, there is a huge focus in our Minnesota Native American Tribes, and so The Forever Sky is one of the books that's going into our third-grade standards, and it's tying into earth science, and it's just showing the Native perspective in stars.
The parent committee also partners on occasion with different schools and PTAs and PTOs that reach out. This slide highlights one of those with Forest View Elementary. In accordance with National Native American Heritage Month, as well as the Read Aloud Month, they approached us and asked the parent committee if they would partially support a speaker and a read-aloud series that the whole school participated in. And that book was by local author and former Forest Lake teacher Dawn Quigley, and that's part of the JoJo McCoon series. It included an author visit with the students. You can see a picture there from the cafeteria and question and answer. It's been reported that this was hugely successful and has led to many, many checkout requests for books from that series. requests for books from that series and promoting students' reading. A little bit ago, Heidi had referenced Theo. Theo is Theo Marcel. He is our American Indian Education Coordinator and Liaison. The top right picture shows him addressing and providing a welcome to all staff at the August keynote, which led into Native expert on culture and education Govinda Boudreau, who addressed and spoke to the staff as well. In the lower right-hand corner, it's a little bit hard with the lighting to see, but that's Theo reading to one of the groups of students, student groups that he's part of. So continuing on, Heidi mentioned that one of the goals that we had was to get our liaison coordinator out to all of the schools, and you can see that for the first time, he has regular appearance twice a month at the secondary schools and once a month at the elementary school. That's new. The purpose of that is to connect with an indigenous adult mentor, monitor school's success and well-being, support future academic and personal goals, and importantly, affirm indigenous identity. When the committee formed back 15 years ago, one of the things that was reported was how isolated Native students and families felt, thinking that they were alone here, were quite a ways away from any reservation, and so there's a standard disconnected feeling. This slide highlights some of the different student activities that Theo is working on with the kids. A couple of them that I'd like to call out include the very popular Ojibwe Medicine History and Stories, Indigenous Medicines, salves and teas, and making the appropriate medicine bags that they would go in. He's been sharing Ojibwe creation stories, wild rice stick making, dream catcher making, Ojibwe floral motifs history, and traditional uses of things like cedar, indigenous food history, tree rights, and learning about sugar bush, which is real topical right now that we're getting into maple syrup harvesting season. Heidi mentioned and extended an invite to you and everyone in the room for May 5th, which is our PK through 12 honoring ceremony. Here are a series of photos highlighting the first one and the most recent one. I'd like to call your attention to two, which I think are really unique at this last one. The first one is in the upper left-hand corner. At the end, we wanted all of the students, all of the Native students in the audience to be recognized, and we had a final closing song by the drum group. If you look carefully, you can see that by one of the seniors who had received a blanket, you can see his father with his arm around him, highlighting the importance of the cultural connection and pride. So I want you to juxtapose that with the one in the lower left-hand corner. And you can see a younger Native student gazing out at all of the other older students and families. These are the connections that are happening now because of the work of the community and the parent committee. Thanks. Any questions?
All right, thank you for coming tonight. Do we have any questions?
Is this going to be at the middle for me?
The honoring ceremony is at the high school auditorium.
High school auditorium, okay. Any other questions? Member Tyson?
I was just going to make a brief comment, not a question, but I was at the ceremony last year, and it was really exciting to see the younger students, and when they got called up there and recognized, everyone in the crowd was cheering, and it just, it just felt really, really supportive. And also, I saw Theo out at Scandia just this last week. I didn't get to talk to him, but he was there, so that was really neat to see him there. So yeah, if you can attend the honoring ceremony, the blankets were really neat and just, I don't know, it was a really unique experience, but just felt really good and inclusive and just really positive, and it was great.
Member Tyson?
Yeah, I was just wondering how much you missed Rebecca Shane her wolf.
She stepped back, but not as a bear.
You guys do an amazing job, and like Member Christiansen said, the ceremonies are just so touching and beautiful, and the blanket ceremony is just something everyone should see. There's so much love and meaning in that group as well. And the food is fabulous when people come to the ceremony, get to taste all the food. And I just think that this makes our district so rich when we have this variety, and we could see like Mr. Ward St. the Young looking into the older people as well. And we sure love Theo, his message at opening day was very inspiring, as well as just something I've never experienced either. So thanks for all your work, and thank you Rebecca for saying it all. And how many total are in the group now?
In which group?
Yeah, like I know last year, there was a total of like 60 kids.
I think the district-wide, we have about 135 Native students.
So it's a large wonder, and I think that last ceremony, that was like 60 or 70. Anyway, thank you for all you do. Thank you for having me.
Anybody else have any questions? All right, then I'll just kind of add my two cents. I'd like to thank you guys for coming out here tonight. I always appreciate it when I see it on the annual compliance vote of concurrence. It sounds like a lot, but I love it when you can come out and present on that night. I feel like it kind of gives us a connection back to the vote of concurrence, and I always enjoy seeing the different activities that you have going on. And I was unable to make the honoring ceremony last year, so I really hope that I can make it this year. But thank you very much for coming out.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
All right, that brings us to the report on 9/16. I can't promise to be nearly as compelling as that, but 9/16 is still pretty exciting as well. So at our 9/16 board meeting, it would have been earlier this month, we had a presentation on career and technical education. Believe it or not, there are currently over 1,100 students enrolled in the 20 different programs that they offer at 9/16. Students enrolled work on professional skills, portfolios, and networking while earning college credit and industry certifications, preparing them for the workforce. We also had a presentation on Project Aware. Project Aware is driving an area of work to develop comprehensive school mental health systems, so we really got deep into the different offerings that 9/16 has in mental health. Another thing that I think we definitely need to pay attention to here at Forest Lake is the board approved the 2025 summer calendar, or summer programming calendars for the EALC programs in the extended school year for their special ed programs. We also looked at a first reading of three different calendars for 2025 and 2026. The first calendar covers the staff and students and the majority of 9/16 programs. It's very similar to our traditional calendar. But we also looked at two different calendars that they're referring to as a stretch calendar, one for Motome Dye and one for the Bel Air Education Center. Stretch calendars have the same number of staff and student days as other 9/16 calendars, but they have more breaks throughout the year instead of a long summer break. So they start earlier in the year, they end later in the year, but they have a longer spring break. They have a, I believe the break was centered right around MEA, so they have a longer MEA break, and they have a longer Christmas break. And what they found is for some students that those longer breaks just give them a little bit better reset, they come back a little bit better prepared for the next stretch of school, they go through that, and then they come to the break. And the reason I say it might be important for us to look at is, I believe we're still responsible for transportation, so that might affect some of our transportation needs in the special ed area. And then the very last thing that we did in the meeting is we approved a letter of intent for leased space to support the Metro Heights Academy, and I'm sure Member Tyson will be very excited to hear this. We have a leased space in Fridley that houses Metro Heights Academy. This location's very small, it's very congested, there's a lot of students and very little space, there's very little common space in that area. This area is much larger, I want to say it's possibly double in size. The cost increase is very minimal, but it will allow additional classrooms, more breakout spaces, a larger common area, parking spaces for student supports, dedicated entrance, parking, and sufficient room and convenience for transportation. So it's a huge boon to the 9/16 program, and I think it's going to be very beneficial. That concludes my 9/16 report. Does anybody have any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, that will bring us to Buildings and Grounds report. For Building and Grounds, I have Director Renberg Idy.
Thank you. In our Buildings and Grounds meeting today, we started off talking about the Columbus Well, so we were able to get the well drilled. We have our plans approved for inside, and we're just waiting on the plans to connect the well to the inside. So that's our progress on that. We'll continue to update the board as that goes along. We talked about our Schumacher Field. There is a committee that has been going on for several months now with community members, members of our high school team, and also the youth in the baseball area. And so just talking about their recommendations on improvements to Schumacher Field that might be needed in upcoming seasons. And then we went on to talk about our next project. We did permission to bid the Ed Center, and so we'll get those bids coming up here March 4th, and then after that, we'll be looking at Wyoming Elementary and going on to their boiler, HVAC, and roofing. And then the last part of the meeting, we talked about our bond sale coming up, so we'll be working on the pre-sale report coming to you guys in April, and then having the bond sale award go in May.
All right, thank you. Do Members Antonson or Haglund have anything to add?
No.
All right, great report. Does anybody have any questions? All right, seeing none, that brings us back to Director Renberg Idy on the Finance Committee.
Thank you for putting me in order. So Finance Committee tonight, we reviewed the run rates for the school districts, so we're about 50% spent, which is right in the ballpark of the last four years of where we've been. We also noted that we have three payrolls in January, so that played into it a little. We reviewed our enrollment, again, above projection by quite a bit, so talked about a budget adjustment that will be coming to the school board here in about May. And then we spent a lot of time on the medical bid opening that we had this week, and so our self-insured plan for medical, we were able to get six bids in that proposal, which is much better than the one bid that we had in our last medical bid process. And so spent a lot of time talking about that, and then that also will be coming to the board here in the future, and the committee again next month. And then we ended with our FY '26 budget planning, just talking about our general budget target of about $1.25 million reduction. Knowing that we have better enrollment, we'll take care of some of that along with a school closure. And so talking about implementing the rest of that then.
All right, thank you so much. Members Haglund, Member Castle, anything to add? All right, I was there as well, nothing for me to add. Member Porkin, do you have a question?
I have a question regarding the medical bids. Was it, which, was it better than you anticipated? I mean, the six bids is great to hear.
Correct, yes.
So was it, I mean, was it what you were thinking, or better?
Yep, so when we brought national insurance services on board last November, we, that was about what they told us. They said they're, they would love to see six bids come in, and so that was exactly where they had promised that they would get us, and so they definitely delivered on that. So very, very happy. Competitive overall when we looked at if we were to keep exactly the same medical and just roll it a year forward, we had that number, and all the bids came in under that number. So that is great.
Wonderful news. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, that brings us to Communications, Director McKinnon.
Yes, I'm going to take his place tonight.
Oh, wonderful. Member Tyson, thank you.
So tonight, we talked a lot about leaning in more towards Instagram for the district profile. It has a younger demographic, and it's more video and photo focus versus comments and all that other stuff. So a lot of our programs already use them. I follow the gymnastics, the wrestlers, all the sports, so leaning into that. And then if I may, I could please refer.
Absolutely, yeah.
Would you like to just give a quick update about MSBA Day of Capital?
Yeah, seeing no objection to that? Yes, please.
Yeah, I totally agree. So MSBA and MASAA has a joint Day of Capital, that'll be March 10, and it runs from 9:00 to 3:00. And new this year, MSBA is scheduling all the legislative appointments. So that is huge, because that is usually a lot of work on the front side to get all of it scheduled. So they're scheduling the appointments, and then also running a bus in between buildings because it was a lot of walking when the weather's cold. And then it begins at the Radisson in St. Paul, and it runs from 9:00 to 3:00, and you couldn't have joy of signing up for MSBA.
All right, thank you. I actually kind of wonder if we shouldn't put an MSBA report on the agenda anyway, since you're so connected and you always have such good information. Maybe a future agenda item. Member Porkin, did you have anything to add for Communications?
I do not.
Okay, were there any questions on Communications? All right, thank you very much. That brings us to Curriculum, Instruction, and Equity Director Jacobson.
Thank you, Member Chair, Dr. Massey, member of the board. This evening at a Curriculum, Instruction, and Equity Committee meeting, two staff members from the high school, Molly Bonnet, who is our Career and College Coordinator, and Mike Miran, who is our CTE and work-based learning coordinators, joined us and shared a lot about the things that we have at our, in our district at our high school that prepare students to make really informed and experienced decisions about where they want to go beyond high school and programs that we offer during their time with us. They spent some time, starting with talking about aid advisory boards that we have developed in partnership with our local community members and business owners, who have shown a deep interest in helping guide what's happening in our classrooms at the high school, the courses we offer, the skills that we build, both technical and employability skills, and constantly giving us feedback in that regard. We talked about some of the career exploration opportunities that have been created as a result of that through work-based learning experiences, through tours, through mentoring, mock interviews, those sorts of things that, again, are afforded to our high school students here in Forest Lake. They spent some time talking about a tool called Zello that we've had in the district for about five years now, which has been a fantastic way to capture student interest in what sort of career fields that they might like to explore in the future, help them design a high school planner that lays out their college courses in a sequential way so they can leave high school prepared, ready to go either into the workforce or into a post-secondary, post-high school experience. They help them identify colleges in the area that might have the degrees that they're interested in. And then they ended by talking about an upcoming college fair that's happening next Thursday in the Southfield House, in which we'll have more than 100 colleges here interested in our students. And so from 1:00 to 2:30 PM, it'll be at the Southfield House, and it'll be, I've been to before, it's a wonderful event. So if any of you have time, stop by the front office and check yourself in, and I would encourage you to go and see for yourself. And that concludes my report.
Wonderful. Member Castle, Member Tyson, anything to add?
Well, it was interesting that there was a, when people have many things to look at, and one of the things was that they can think about something, and then, well, maybe that's not quite my interest because of this. And then, so then you eliminate things that are less attractive to you, and then you hone in on what it is that you'd like to do, as opposed to starting out with one thing and then trying to go from there when you don't like that. You have many things that you're looking at, and then redo some from there. That was very interesting.
Yeah, what Member Castle's talking about there is how students oftentimes feel overwhelmed when having to make these decisions, but through a series of conversations and tools, like I mentioned Zello, they can maybe start by ruling out what they don't have an interest in. And at the middle school, we revised our program there so that now they have gateway experiences in all these different areas, so that they can check things off. experiences in all these different areas, so that they can check things off if they say, you know, something, healthcare just isn't for me. And then they can narrow their options and try to focus in on where they might want to go.
And all rolls together.
Mm-hmm.
That's exciting. Member Tyson.
Yeah, I'd just like to add that, you know, Mr. Mearon and Molly Bonnet, they have just grown exponentially this, this program, and it is career and tough one. And so I just celebrate that within our district because it's, it's a huge and valuable program. We talked about how I have been approached by other colleagues, how do you have a welding, why do you offer welding courses? Well, way back when, we kept our shop. When things were on the chopping block and we were having to make significant deep cuts, we kept that shop in those areas. So we didn't grow that, whereas there is a welding shortage, but you can't get a welding lab up and running in no time. It's money investment space, all that. So we're very proud of this. One fact that I wrote down, we have 12 industrial certifications, 48 college credits, 18 are AP and 30 are concurrent welding ones. So that's so amazing, and so we'd really be proud of that.
All of those certifications and college credits, I'm sorry, can be taken here in our hallways.
Yes.
By, taught by our teachers, which is really terrific. They don't have to get in a car and drive someplace, they can do it riding the bus to school and riding the bus home.
That's excellent. Does anybody have any questions?
Well, I do. Where were you saying this is? South where, what? Just, South Field House?
South Field House. The South Field House, that's a large white field house that you see at the high school.
Yeah, thank you, okay.
All right, does anybody else have any questions? All right, seeing none, that brings us to Policy, Director Wilson.
All right, tonight at the Policy Committee, we reviewed four different policies. And the first one is naming of the school district policy 1101A, the difference between our IRS name and our given name. We also reviewed policy 302, which is travel expense reimbursement. No significant changes there that is recommended. And 543, which is school-sponsored student publication and activities policy, looking at guidance around school media, and bringing that to make sure it complies with state statute. And then policy 608, which is emergency school closings and activity cancellation policy, looking at the language to support afternoon activities in the event that there's a more, a school closing that is impacted in the morning, with the language in the afternoon.
All right, thank you. Member Christensen or Antonson, anything to add?
No, I do not.
All right, hopefully no questions.
Sorry.
Member Haglund?
Sorry, where did the Policy Committee land on the naming of the school versus the legal name? What kind of changes can we expect to see come out of that? Are you going to align with the registered name or the given, or the name that we've been using?
There were no changes.
No changes, okay.
Yeah, we've got the legal name and then doing business as Forest Lake Area Schools.
Okay.
And I think when I reviewed it, the only change that I saw was there was just a clarification up there that states we registered the IRS as. Otherwise, the policy would have been unchanged. Is that how it came out of committee? Okay.
And it will be moving forward for you guys to be able to review it in your readings and.
Wonderful.
Thank you very much. That brings us to Staff Welfare, Dr. Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We talked about district enrollment, which is trending very positively at this point. So some really exciting developments and news by way of overall district enrollment, which has a positive impact on the budget, as Director Renberg Idy indicated earlier. We also talked about budget development. And then finally, we spent quite a bit of time talking about our budget elementary boundary adjustment work. We looked at our second iteration of boundary adjustments. This is a really big topic and undertaking for the school district that will have certainly an impact on all of our communities and some of our families as we move forward. The plan would be to implement adjustments for the '26, '27 school year, and are, we're still tracking to bring a proposal to the board on May 5. We will have one more design team meeting next week, and then after spring break on March 10. We will have our first meeting with our parent advisory, parent input team to look at the concepts that we've developed. We'll make further refinements to the plan and continue conversation with the board as we move those forward. Again, with the plan of bringing a final proposal on May 1. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Dr. Massey. Member Porcoran, member Christensen, anything to add to that?
No, I do not.
All right, the only thing I would add, add to that is that the elementary school boundary adjustment is obviously exhausting work. Staff consulting spending a ton of time on that. Part of, you know, there's always this saying as you never want to see how the sausage is made, but part of that, will it start to include a lot of the board discussion, a lot of, a lot of stuff happening behind the scenes on that. So it's definitely, definitely work that we're putting a lot of thought in, in the district. I think you have six maps already, and none of them are anywhere near final, so it just shows how intense some of that work is. And if there are no questions, we will move to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Massey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. During the February 6 school board meeting, the board asked me to provide an update and interpretation of the January 29 Presidential Executive Order titled Ending Radical Indoctrination in K-12 Schooling. The order calls for a report called the Ending Indoctrination Strategy to be provided to the President within 90 days of this executive order being signed. The order establishes the President's Advisory 1776 Commission for Promoting Patriotic Education. The district, along with the Minnesota School Boards Association, Minnesota Department of Education, the Minnesota Attorney General's Office, will monitor the specific recommendation from the strategy and will take guidance on how best to respond. Specifically, the executive order calls for ending and eliminating gender ideology from school district practices and instruction, and in discrimination equity ideology, reestablishes commission to promote patriotic education. The order provides examples for each of these items, and it will be the task of those preparing the Ending Indoctrination Strategy to provide specific and, to provide specific activities and practices that will not be permitted under the order. I would advise the board to apply a wait-and-see approach to this executive order before any action be taken with respect to district practices, policy, or instruction. I would add, the district has a longstanding tradition of promoting the virtues of the United States, even while teaching our vast history across the grade levels. Furthermore, the district does not believe that it is the role of district staff to counsel or guide students into or through identity-related questions or discernments. We believe that this is the responsibility of students' parents and families, and if appropriate, medical professionals. We will, however, continue our commitment to ensure that all students are treated with respect and dignity, and will promote this value throughout our system. We are very proud of the work our teachers and staff do every day to create a safe and welcoming learning environment for all our students so that they may thrive and achieve at their highest potential. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Dr. Massey. That brings us to the approval of the Consent Agenda. Is there anything on the Consent Agenda that anybody would like to have pulled this evening?
I would like to pull.
Member Christensen?
I would like to pull item 6.3, please.
6 dot 3, Licensed Personnel. Member Haglund?
6.1, please.
6 dot 1. Any other items that anybody would like to pull from the Consent Agenda? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve 6.2 and 6.4.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, the motion carries. That brings us to item 6.1. Would entertain a motion.
Move to approve 6.1 with the exceptions of check numbers 558837 and 558856.
And we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Joy, did you get that motion?
I did.
Okay, five, okay, so the motion is to approve the bills as of February 20, 2025, with the exception of check number 558837 and? 558856. Okay, that was not as quick as Joy. Any discussion? Member Haglund?
We'd just like to ask Administration, so both of these checks were for the Your Words Matter t-shirts and Your Words Matter wristbands. They total a little over $1,200. One was for, the shirts looked like they came from Rebel Sports, and the other one, the wristbands came from Wristband Brothers. Can you explain? I would just like some clarification as to how these items came onto the board bills and some more detail behind that.
Yeah, any purchase made in the school district, whether they're purchases from a club or out of the general fund for any other academic supplies, require board approval. So those particular purchases came out of Student Council or National Honor Society?
Student Council.
Student Council. So those funds were raised by Student Council, and the expenditure was out of those funds raised, not out of the district general fund.
Do we know if the funds raised offset the expenditure?
I, certain, yes, thank you.
Okay, well, I would like to amend my motion then, to approve all of the board bills, but then I would still like to see some documentation from Administration to show that the Student Council did raise that.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second on the amendment. We have an amendment on the table, so right now, is there any discussion on the amendment to approve all of the bills? Okay, I'm just going to point out really quickly now, the amendment is to amend the original motion that exempted two bills. This amendment would include all the bills with a request to show some documentation. This is not approving the bills. We'll then come back to that. Okay, any other discussion? All right, seeing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, the ayes have it. So now the motion that is on the table is to approve all bills as of February 20, 2025, with the supportive documentation. Any discussion? Member Christensen?
I just wanted to be able to make a point. I actually purchased one of those shirts, I know it was $8.
Okay, member Tyson?
I purchased mine as well, $8.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, motion to approve the bills as of February 20. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion carries, the bills are approved. That brings us to item 6.3, Licensed Personnel. I would entertain a motion to approve.
I would, since I pulled it, am I able to make some comments?
As soon as we have a motion on the table, yes.
Okay. I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Member Christensen?
I just wanted to make some comments. I just wanted to acknowledge the people that were here tonight and that took time out of their day, especially our teachers and our staff, you know, that have been working all day, and they're here to support these groups. It's very important. And I just, they spoke very well about all of the value of these clubs, and there's not really anything I can add more to what they all said, but I just want to thank everyone for their time and for their support. And I would also like to express my gratitude and appreciation for the advisors that we are approving tonight, and all the advisors, and all of the teachers, as someone on a green card mentioned, that take time out of their, out of their evenings, their family time to spend time with our students. And I just think it's really neat, I think it was Mr. Newcombe who said that on the Thursday nights when these groups meet, that kids are excited to be in school. I think that is a, I mean, a lot of points are worth repeating, but that one really stuck to me, the kids are happy to still be in school, and they're happy to be with friends and have a sense of belonging and a sense of pride. So I just wanted to express my gratitude.
All right, thank you. Member Tyson?
Yes, I'd like to comment on this too, and I want to thank everyone for the very profound statements and prideful comments we got about how we support our clubs in Forest Lake Area Schools, and how our affinity clubs and our open-minded affinity club and all of our clubs are very important to our student body. And our clubs don't divide, they create spaces that foster those friendships and nurture those bonds across all of our school communities. We also are well aware that mental health needs are rising and have risen and chronic absenteeism, and this is what we pulled, Mr. Newcombe is saying. It could be because that's part of the day and why students come to school. I also want to say that one of our emails contained direct words from our strategic plan, which I hold very close to my work, and educational equity is the foundation of everything we do. That's what we believe in Forest Lake Area Schools. And what makes me the saddest is that our students have to listen and deal with this adult school board stuff. They should be enjoying their student life, nurturing their friendships, feeling the support and love as they walk down the halls in our schools. I am a public school board elected member to serve all of the students in our public school. Everyone that walks through our halls and through our doors, within our buildings, they're all Rangers, and we will treat them as such. So again, I have so much gratitude for all the heartfelt messages, phone calls I receive, emails, texts, and just overwhelmed with the support for affinity clubs and our groups in our school district. So that's all I have to say.
Any other comments? Member Porcoran?
I just had, well, also I just want to echo what Jill and Gail said. Just a powerful, it's been a rough week, but very powerful emails and very heartfelt. Been kind of an emotional week for all of us. But some of the words used, I just wrote a few down, just increased attendance, that to me, that's just a powerful message. Mental health, increased inclusion, celebrating life, seeing and a sense of pride, belonging, welcomed and validated, empowerment, shared experiences, shared our district beliefs, supported in our strategic plan, confidence, increased leadership, just all those powerful messages. I mean, it was amazing. All your words tonight just really hit my heart. So thank you so much for coming and just being here, it really means a lot. So just keep, keep showing up, keep, keep your message strong. It really does mean a lot to us, and I do appreciate you guys showing up tonight.
All right, any other comments on 6.3?
No.
All right, I'd like to echo the comments, the thanks from the community for reaching out on these things. I do think it's important that we create, that we treat all of our groups equitably across the entire district regardless of content. With that, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to item 7.1, Award Bids for Technology Needs. Director Renberg Idy.
Thank you. So a couple months ago, we came to ask permission to bid, and so we were able to, with our E-Rate Funds, which again covers 60% of the projects, and the district covers 40, we were able to go out to bid, have our announcement for the bid published on January 16 and 23. We opened bids on February 6. We did get two bids for the project, and Tech Check came in at the lowest bid at $263,462.24. And with that, Administration, we recommend approval of Tech Check.
All right, I would entertain a motion. Motion?
Second.
And a second. All right, any questions? All right, any questions for Director Enberg, aye? All right, seeing none, I would ask the clerk, please take a roll call.
Okay. Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Rebeline?
Aye.
Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Haglund?
Aye.
Member Antonson is aye. Member Castle?
Aye.
Member Christensen?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
All right, that brings us to item eight dot one. Before we move into that, though, I would like to entertain a motion to recess for five minutes.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion carries. We will adjourn. All right, I now bring the February twentieth regular school board meeting back to order. Member Antonson, would you please take a roll call of the tenants?
Sure. Okay, member Christensen?
Here.
Member Tyson?
Here.
Member Rebeline?
Here.
Member Corcoran?
Here.
Member Haglund?
Here.
Member Antonson is here, and member Castle?
Here.
All right, all here. That brings us right back on track to item eight dot one. These are listed as first readings, but as you'll notice from the policy number, the twelve hundred series, rather than turning them over to Dr. Massey and having them come right back to me, I will start us off these, this is a continuation of the policies I've worked on before. We have twelve oh, sorry, twelve oh two, twelve oh three, twelve oh four, and twelve oh five on deck for this evening. We can start right off with twelve oh two. I will also start with member, or Director Freiberg's comments that we did last time around.
With me.
So twelve oh two. I went through the comments here and actually updated the policies to reflect that and was able to get them there by last week. So any changes that I made based on these comments will be in the policy. The first policy here is on school board members and officers, and those of you new to the board won't recall this, but those of you who were on the board last year will remember, we actually looked at this policy pretty close at the end of the last calendar year, and we were looking specifically at what is now section five under all board member responsibilities. Those are the primary changes off of the MSBA model. There's also some changes in organization. So if you'd like, we can start right at the top of organization. The second and third paragraph were the the two paragraphs where I kind of struggled with this, and this we ran into this year because we had a gap in the board officers. So this was simply my proposal on what we do if we have a vacant officer's role, how we define that, how that fledgeses out. Anybody have any questions or comments on that proposal or any potential ways to do it maybe a little bit better?
Which section? I'm sorry.
At the very top in section three under organization, it talks about what to do if we have an officer's positions that are vacated, specifically the chair position. In our current standing policy, we don't, we don't account for this. We state in our policy, the chair is there, and if the chair is absent, then the vice chair steps in, and we don't take it any further. If we look at Robert's Rules specifically, it then gives you an avenue where it steps down to the clerk. The clerk would then start the meeting, and you would immediately elect chair pro temp. That works great for a single meeting, but what it doesn't do is it doesn't address what happens, like in the case of this year, where we went four days without a chair or a chair or a vice chair. So we didn't have that individual, other than the superintendent, that could engage legal counsel or any of the other, we'll call them powers, that are vested upon the chair or the vice chair. It created kind of a gap where there was uncertainty. So that's what those two paragraphs were intended to do, is to kind of close that gap. And the way that I ended up proposing it here is just simply stating, like like as is defined in Robert's Rules, that if the chair and the vice chair are both vacated due to the expiration of their term, the clerk would then assume those duties of the chair in a pro temp or status, and the treasurer would then assume the vice chair pro temp. And what that would do is if a chair, if if a clerk was still existing on the board and their term carried over, they would just move into that role, and the same for the treasurer. But in the situation where, say, your your chair, your vice chair, and your clerk, well, then your treasurer would become your vice chair and therefore assume the duty of the chair. So all that kind of natural progression works out really well. But as we all know here tonight, in even years, we have four board members turnover. So the possibility does exist that all four of them were officers. So that's what that second paragraph, or that that last paragraph takes care of. If all four positions are vacant, and this is where I would love some input. My proposal is that the most tenured board member, board member still available, or in the case of an equal tenure, the most tenured board member available, having received the highest number of votes in the most recent general election, would assume the duties of the chair pro temp until successors could be elected and qualified.
I think that seems, seems right. I mean, it seems like logical succession.
The only scenario I could come up with with this suggestion was what if there was a tie at the top? And I started pulling my hair out, which little of it is left, and I went, what are the odds of a tie at the top? And if there was a tie at the top?
You'd have to roll the dice.
Let those two people work it out on their own. And determine what to do. There's a chair, there's a, there's a vice chair, it's covered. Yeah, member Christensen?
Go ahead.
Oh, member Tyson?
I just want to echo what Julie said, and I think it is on a very rare occasion that this would happen, but I think it's good to have that in place, and it does make sense.
Yeah, thank you, because my, my concern coming into this year was, God forbid, what if something happened with our superintendent, and we needed to take some sort of action in those four days? We would have needed to convene an emergency meeting, and we wouldn't have had a chair in place to do that. So that was really the intent there. Uh, member Christensen, do you have something?
I just, I just had a question. I'm looking back over the comments from Donna Peterson. And she, first of all, I, I kind of wish she was here, just because she's sort of the, and I know, Mr. Chair Rebeline, that you spent a lot of time on this, and I appreciate that, but she's kind of our policy guru, so I sort of wish she was here while we were discussing these things. But I am looking at her comments that she made, and just backing up here, I didn't notice it right away, I'm sorry. Under the first paragraph under organization where it says whichever is longer, on her second page there, her pages are not numbered, but second page in the second paragraph there, she seems to have a little bit of a concern about the phrase whichever is longer. She's saying, does it open an issue if a member is elected to an office but chooses a handful of months in the term to resign? She just has a few questions there, so I don't know if if you had a chance to review that or if you had any?
I, I did, and I apologize. I must have been late in getting that update to Joy. I agreed with her, and I actually removed that term. It now reads, these officers shall hold an office for a period of one year or until their successors are elected and qualified.
Right.
I removed whichever is longer.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, like I said, I sent updates, but they probably got in too late.
Okay, thank you.
So those will be, those updates that I made will be reflected once it comes to us for an official first reading, ready for adoption. Uh, member Haglund, did you have a question?
Yeah, the, as far as the succession planning of the four officers, you know, my mind is going to open board seats, like you said, in the event that all four officers are in a year election, and the board is going to be vacated of officers. You know, you could possibly have language in there states that prior, that last board meeting, prior to that happening, you elect a chair pro temp. However, the more I think about this, you know, we're focusing that situation heavy on elections. However, God forbid, something happens to all the officers of the board at some sort of an event, we still need language in there to what we would do. So I think having that in there the way it is, is logical and makes sense.
All right, thank you. Everybody here seems satisfied with the succession plan that I proposed. This was, this was simply a proposal. I racked my brain on that one for several nights, trying to figure out what is the best way to do that. So. Good. The other piece that we have in here, and this is a piece that the the former seven board members, three of us here tonight included, discussed quite a bit, is the members' responsibilities in section five under section A, all board members. This is largely a copy and paste from what we had discussed in, gosh, November, December, maybe even October of last year. And, and the idea here is there's really nothing new. We perform our duties in accordance with Minnesota state statutes. We follow our code of ethics, except in emergencies. This is a, so item number three there, that is actually lifted from, I believe the current policy is one-ten, which is adequate information to proceed. The MSBA model policy had no provisions for adequate information to proceed. I felt it was important to carry it forward, so that is where that that language comes from in section three. You'll also notice that that language is also in, a little bit lower on the page, under the superintendent's duties on section two there. The superintendent is afforded the same privilege to have adequate information. So that would really be the only change from policies that we've already discussed. Section four there, under all board member responsibilities, talks to the incredible privilege that we all have as board members to hand out diplomas, and it gives board members who are no longer serving, but have served the district the opportunity to come back. served the district the opportunity to come back. The opportunity is not guaranteed. It's something that the board chair and the principal of the high school will work out kind of the logistics around making it happen. But it does put it in language that it's something that we want to do.
Yeah, I'd have liked to have done that. I was off two years, and that's when one, my oldest graduated, so I didn't get to give him his diploma. So, I would have liked that in, in that.
I, I didn't realize there was a corcling clause in here. I, I.
Yeah, would have been a corcling clause.
Jokingly referred to it as the Peterson clause.
Yeah, it would have been.
Uh, Member Christiansen.
Uh, thank you. Sorry, I'm going back up to paragraph 3 there. I'm again looking at.
Yes.
Director Peterson, her notes. And she is saying, my recommendation is that the board proceeds somewhat cautiously in this area. And she's saying the phrase about how information is gathered raises her awareness. So, again, I'm just, so this is our first, so this.
Oh, yes, yes.
So, just sort of a point of inquiry, I guess, is this our first, this is our first reading, so we're discussing and making changes.
This isn't even the first reading. This is, this is a, let's talk about.
Because I would also like to say, however I say that, I think when we're discussing these things possibly in the future, I, and I think it would be really helpful to have Director Peterson here just for a reference.
Friedman.
But, um, pardon, excuse me, yes. Donna Friedman. I used to work with a woman named Donna Peterson.
[laughing]
And she, yeah, there you go. That's, I knew when I said it that I was wrong. Thank you. I used to work with a Donna Peterson at the University of Minnesota. Sorry about that. Okay, so, so she's saying there she had some concerns, and then also under superintendent, um, whatever, superintendent duties list, she is saying, I would encourage much more study of these provisions and possible guidance from MSBA, Minnesota Department of Administration, and perhaps even district council prior to adopting these provisions. So, again, she's kind of the policy guru, so if she has concerns, I'm, I'm going with her.
And so, can you clarify, since I don't have a privy to those notes that you're referring to, are you talking about, or is she referring to, under B superintendent, 1 through H?
Yeah, I believe so.
Or is it B through H?
Um, excuse, um, I think she did, these are, I think she sent out these notes to all of us.
Yeah, she, she did.
It was a while ago, but they're, they're not page numbered and stuff. So, I, I apologize. I'm not sure.
So, was it?
It says superintendent duties list.
Yeah, her primary concern, Member Tyson, was provisions 3F and 3G.
Okay, thank you.
And I did.
I'm gonna look at that closer.
So, one of the, one of her early concerns about provision G, provision G was to provide regular status updates, at least weekly is recommended on important matters to the school board members. That actually comes from some of the great work that I think Dr. Massey already does. He sends us weekly updates. I've heard stories from a lot of other school boards where they don't get regular updates from their superintendent. They need to claw that out of them. And I felt it was important to kind of lay out that expectation that our superintendent understands, that we want regular communication. Like I said, it's not a problem we have here. We, we are blessed in that regard. When I originally wrote this, I wrote, provide regular status updates at least weekly on an important matter. So, it was more of a directive and less of a recommendation. So, I did update that language a little bit. In Section F, oh yes, I remember this one. Provide information to board members that is necessary for them to perform their duties upon request at the discretion of the superintendent. This information will be provided to all board members. In the original version, it read, at the discretion of the superintendent or at the request of any board member, the information will be provided to all board members. So, I tried to tighten that up a little bit and give the superintendent a little bit more discretion in determining if it was appropriate. Should there be like a student privacy concern or something along those lines? I would certainly be interested in Dr. Massey's thoughts on this, his experience working with this over the years, if that feels appropriate or not.
Yeah, I think it would be appropriate that the superintendent have some discretion over information. Information to one board member on a question that contains, as you indicated, private information or private data may or may not be public to the whole board. So, I think some of that discretion is going to be important.
All right. With the changes that we talked about in the policy here and the specific points, do we want to, do we feel like we want to send this to a policy committee for review, or do you have other comments?
I do, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, it's quite all right.
We, we, could we go back to 2?
Absolutely.
Page 2. So, one thing I would like to, can I find it again? Okay, so, under clerk, I think it's important, and I've been to several trainings through MSBA, to state that the clerk will chair the meeting in the absence of the chair or the vice chair.
You are one step ahead of us, Member Tyson.
Oh, wow.
That is in Policy 1203, School Board Procedures Rules of Order. Yes, it is.
Okay, so, it is in there. The other thing is, under E, in members, all board members, members' responsibility, I would like to add or make it, any other circumstance as deemed appropriate by a board vote. I think everyone should know.
Oh.
What that special circumstance is, and be aware of it, and then be able to just hold a board, board vote on that.
As deemed appropriate by the board.
Yeah. And it could be a vote, but I think at least the board should be informed what that other circumstance could be and be aware of it before the graduation ceremony.
If we put the directive in there, any other circumstances as deemed appropriate by the board, it would just have to come to the board for a vote?
Yeah.
I, I don't see any problem with that. All right.
Good, thank you.
Seeing no objection, I'll make that edit. I think that's a great contribution to that. I, to be honest, one of my hesitations with that section was to find a way to make it, it easy enough process that, that an individual could, could go through that, that process. But it put a lot of power into that board chair role, and especially sitting in this chair right now, it wasn't the most comfortable proposal. So, I do like changing that to as deemed appropriate by the board.
Great, thank you.
All right. Was there any other concerns that we wanted to send this to a policy committee, or do we just want to move it forward for a first reading, maybe ruminate on it for a while, and see if we want to make any changes later?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, we will set that aside for later adoption. I've made that edit, and I will include that in the next update that I send to administration. That brings us to Policy 1203. All right, so 1203 is the rules of order. And, Member Tyson, this is where that is addressed because Robert's Rules of Order specifically states that, that process of moving from chair to vice chair to clerk to treasurer. I don't have it specifically outlined in the policy in the way that you state because I just defer to the book. And the reason I defer to the book is because the book is six, almost 700 pages long. So, I, I think it makes sense to only reference the exceptions in our policy rather than to try to rewrite the rules. That's my thought on that. The changes in here, I know we've talked a lot about the MSBA guide. The changes to the MSBA guide here is, MSBA doesn't get as specific about how to handle Robert's Rules of Order 4921, which is the procedure of small boards. If you look at the rulebook, and this is where the Robert's Rules geeks such as myself just, we spend too much time. But if we look at the rulebook specifically for small boards, and a board of seven would be considered small, they exclude the need of receiving a second on a motion. That does not even meet state statute. We're required to have seconds on our motion, so that's excluded in number 1. The second one, there's Robert's Rules of Order, concerning debate on the question and related clauses are in effect, which negates 4921. Let me look at that really quickly, so I can speak to that accurately. 4921 subsection 3. Oh, this one, this one talks about kind of limits of debate. Original Robert's Rules of Order limits debates to 10 minutes. If we accept this, we are accepting no limits on debate, no limit on the number of times you can speak, no limit on how long you can speak. It basically brings a filibuster to the school board. I, I don't think anybody in the audience here tonight would appreciate it if any of us went on a 45-minute talk.
I don't think so.
Even though that would be perfectly within order in that year. Member Christiansen.
I was just, again, back to Director Friedman. So, on 1203, she said, on 3B2 and 3H, which you were just mentioning.
Yes.
She is saying, I'm not sure it's wise in a community this size with a board this size to limit each member to two comments. She's concerned that our community expects full discussion of matters, blah, 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 blah. And then she says on 3H, she says she has similar thoughts. There's only seven board members. I believe our community expects all to fully participate in both debate and votes. And then she's saying, this policy 1203 seems to try to cover a lot of territory, and she's wondering if it should be divided into some smaller pieces. So, again, this is kind of a big chunk. This is important work that we're doing here. You know, I just want to make sure we're all kind of understanding what we're agreeing here to.
Correct.
Well, I'll let you address, Member Christiansen.
Member Christiansen's question?
Yeah, can you probably answer one of them?
So, if we look at 4921 subsection C, subsection C has two exemptions to regular rules. The first one is there is no limit to the number of times a member can speak to a debatable question. Appeals, however, are limited, and each member can only speak twice on them, and the chair can only speak twice. Oh, no, I'm sorry. On an, on an amendment, no, on an appeal, each member can only speak once while the chair may be able to speak twice. The limit to speech to two times, and I actually did some anecdotal observation on this after I read these, the comments about limiting speech. I actually looked back on this at several meetings, and if we ever have a situation where a member will speak more than two times, I would say roughly 90% of the time, a question, the question gets called. So, every single time that we've had it occur where we've gone on and we've had kind of a lot of back and forth on things like that, in those situations where that occurs, somebody ends up calling the question, and then you have a two-thirds majority vote to end discussion right then and there. So, the way I looked at it is, and why I felt it was important to leave this in here, is that the chair can always quickly and easily extend debate simply by making a comment of, you know, something along the lines of, unless there's an objection. So, say for example, Member Haglund speaks on an issue twice, it would no longer be appropriate to go back to Member Haglund for a third time under this rule, but it would be very simple to, for, for the chair to state, unless there's an objection, we go back to Member Haglund. And then if there's an objection, it only takes a majority vote to prevent that speech, which is a much lower threshold than a two-thirds vote to continue it. So, my, my thought here being, when we, anytime we go back and forth where we're talking two, three, four times, the question always gets called. And then everybody just kind of sits back, they're exhausted, and they say, fine, let's just call the question and move on. So, that, that was my thought here.
The one comment I was gonna make to Member Christiansen too is, if we ever worked as a board to come up with a, a situation or a policy that requires more debate or we feel like is gonna need a lot more back and forth, we can always vote as a board to suspend the rule. Correct?
Correct, yep.
So, just because that rule's in there as, as a guardrail, doesn't mean that that's set and stoned, it can never change. As a board, we could collectively suspend the rules on debate and then debate it as long as we want. I mean, I know Julie would like, love to talk for 45 minutes, right?
Oh, of course, yeah.
So, so for, if a topic were to come up, and the chair could probably explain it better than I could, but we could just as a group put a motion out there to suspend the rules while we debate that topic, and then we would be able to talk as much as we want. Am I correct?
And what, what is the rule on suspend the rules? Is it a majority, or is it?
Um, actually, it can be even simpler than that. It can be unanimous consent. All the chair would really need to do is say, unless there's an objection, the rules will be suspended for this discussion. And if nobody raises their hand or pushes back on it, the rules are, are essentially off the table for that discussion, so.
But the chair would have to initiate that, the chair would have to.
No, any, any member can initiate that.
I guess I'm just, I, I feel like we're, I don't know, we're searching for a problem or we're planning for something really big that might never happen. I don't know. I feel, I don't know.
I feel like it limits us by putting that in there?
I'm just wondering why, like, why? Why now? Like, I don't know. Has this happened before? Has anyone ever done a filibuster and filibuster going on for 45 minutes? Can you filibuster in the school board?
Yep, right now, under our current rules.
I've, I've had someone do that.
But has any, I don't know.
I've been on those meetings that have gone till midnight. Yes, I have. And it's no fun, just telling you. It was only once, but it was not.
So, it can happen.
So, it has happened.
It has happened, yes, it has. Before Dr. Massey's time.
Member Castle.
So, a motion can also be made to extend the time as opposed to just suspending the rule?
Yes, yep.
So, there are safeguards.
Yeah, Member Tyson.
I just want to question, if you make a motion and you vote to extend the debate.
Yep.
Does that have to be a vote then, or is it just a motion and a second and a?
In that case, like, like Member Christiansen, member, mentioned, is it only the chair that can do that? Absolutely not. You would be able to say, I, I moved to suspend the rule, or I moved to extend the debate, and then it would be just like any other motion. You'd get a second, we'd vote on it, a simple majority would pass that, and we move on. The chair-initiated suspending, suspension of the rules is actually a little bit more difficult of a standard because unless I do it through a, a motion where I get a second, I require unanimous consent. If a single person objects, so if, if I sit here and say, unless there's an objection, we're going to extend the debate, all it would take would be a single member to state, object. And as soon as that objection is heard, then the debate cannot be extended. So, it actually is, it's a little bit harder to do it that way for the chair because you need unanimous approval for that.
Hmm. So, one comment I want to make is that when I took my MSBA training and we learned about Robert's Rules, we're kind of told to not get into the weeds with it, that we are a small board.
Yep.
Any boards under 21 members are considered small boards, and some districts, we know, have boards of six, boards of five, we're seven. So, I'm just afraid that we're getting into the weeds and that for regular people reading our policies, it just gets very confusing. And yeah, I'm not sure if I'm comfortable with that extra layer that has to be on there for extending the debate.
Oh, with B2?
Yeah.
Okay. I would, I would actually go back to Member Corcoran and ask her to tell us a story about, because I put this in here primarily just to avoid the filibuster. I, I didn't know that you'd actually ever lived through one.
Yeah, I did. But, I mean, it just, I would, I would hope that people would be considered enough not to do it. I mean, but there's always gonna be maybe someone that wouldn't be, unless they care that much to really go on and on for hours, but.
And in this, with, with this rule present, it gives the board the ability to handle that situation without having to interject and try to shut down the discussion. I mean, it.
Yeah. I mean, it's rare.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's why I put it in here. I put it in here as a failsafe that I was hoping never, ever came up. So, here, the, the board member in this room has lived through it, makes me feel even more strongly that we should, should include it.
I say it's rare. It's not always, it's not always happening.
So, under purpose, because I keep not jumping in there.
Sure.
I would like it to read governing rules. In looking at other district policies, it calls them more governing rules for the conduct meeting of the school. I mean, I don't mean to wordsmith, but I just like the sound of that better in the purpose line.
Can I ask you?
Instead of specific rules, governing.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with that at all, but can you email? Yeah, I, I don't disagree with that at all, but can you email me the verbiage that you'd like to see there and we'll figure that out?
Yep, and then I have one more thing. Do you want to hear it now?
Sure.
So under E, I would like that to be removed.
Which?
E, under Rules of Order, page two.
Oh, section three, rule E, about the authority to recognize.
Section three, rule E, page two.
The authority to recognize the audience?
Yes. Any member of the audience who got a request to be heard at the school board meeting, members of the public who aren't recognized shall follow school procedures. But I'm wondering if it wouldn't be better, and I read this in another district's, and it's more off of the MSBA, members of the public who want to bring an issue forward to the school board should attend the listening session held before the regular meeting. Does that make more sense?
What if we don't have a listening session and they still want to be heard, like, tonight?
Good point.
Or in this case, I think this is language that comes from MSBA. If not.
I don't think it does.
Okay, then I stand corrected. Um, when I read this, what, what this tells me is if a, if a question comes before the board, and I'm gonna pick on Principal Caldwell because they sit, sitting there, and, and I know that he has the answer, this gives the board the authority to, to recognize him and ask him that question, get that information immediately rather than trying to find another, you know, alternative mechanism to get that information. That, that was my thought on this.
Just says, any member of the audience, which I think is very wide open.
Maybe it needs to be.
I think maybe what you're guarding against is having the audience participate in board debate.
Yeah, because we're trained that it's our meeting.
Yes.
We're in our meeting. This is our meeting to do our business and get our business done. So that's, that's kind of what I'm guarding against.
I, I see what your, your concern is, but it, it's also saying that we have the authority to recognize them, not saying that they can just speak up at any time and overtake our meeting. We would have to recognize them to come up and speak to us. Is that correct?
It, it is, and it also point out the verbiage that it's the school board shall have the authority, not the board chair. I, as the board chair, would not have the authority to recognize Principal Caldwell, but without objection, we could recognize the principal or we could vote to recognize someone in the audience. So if that were to occur, and again, this goes back to the comments I made earlier about extending debate, if there were an objection to, to bringing that person before the board, any member could object.
We, we could also tighten up the verbiage maybe by just adding that school board shall be authority to recognize any member of the audience regarding our court request, um, consistent with the current agenda.
Yeah, well, obviously, if it was out of order, then it would.
Yeah, if it was out of order, it'd be out of order, so.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't see that there's anything bad about it because it's still up to the board to recognize them, but I do see that there could be some potential there for.
Yeah. Even if it's a rare opportunity, at least we have that ability.
And I would, I would actually argue that based on the discussion we just had about suspending the rules, we can do this anyway. This just kind of calls out the fact that it's an option. It's there, it's in front of us, it just kind of reminds us of that fact that we can really be the policy.
But it's not really an option if it's in the policy, correct?
It, it's an option right now. It's not in our policy right now.
Right, so I'm not for it, so I'd like to see it moved, removed or changed, but.
Okay, so I'll, I'll note that as a.
We can talk about it more.
Yeah, I'll note that as a potential strike, but.
And I'm also curious, Member Chair.
Yes.
When I looked at other policies from other districts on this, we don't have in this one model policy, MSBA, MSA, two oh four, two oh six, or two oh seven, which a lot of districts, four other districts I looked at have that in there.
Yes.
But we can just look at that at another time, too.
Two oh.
Four.
Two oh four is coming. That's, uh, the next one I'm gonna talk about.
But they have it included in this.
Oh, I see what you're saying. They have it included as.
School board procedures.
As a cross-reference?
Right.
Okay.
And two oh six and two oh seven.
Two oh four, two oh six.
Two oh seven's still there.
Two oh seven, okay. Um, okay, so twelve oh seven, no problem to include that. Twelve oh six, I'm just looking at the, the index I have here really quickly.
Green card policy?
Um, yeah, twelve oh six is a future policy that, um, I've, I've been calling the, the green card policy, which is something that we definitely want Policy Committee to work on. Student council at the high school has indicated a desire to work on, which is why that's not included in here. Um, twelve oh four is school board meeting minutes.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we could certainly reference that in here. I don't, I don't have any opposition to doing that.
Okay.
It simply wasn't because it wasn't referenced in the model policy.
Okay.
But as you'll see, my model policy actually rolls up, there are, believe it or not, five policies that MSBA proposes for rules of order and I rolled it into one.
Yeah, I know. It, so is meeting minutes referenced in another one that you've worked on?
Meeting minutes is actually coming up next.
Okay.
And I wonder, no, that one only refers back to what I've called twelve oh five, which refers to the meetings themselves, which is up after that one. So, yeah, cross-references in policies are always fun.
All right.
All right, any other questions or comments on?
I have a question.
Yeah, Member Christiansen.
Just looking under special voting situations.
Yes.
Again, Director Friedman is saying that there should be a complete set of legal cross-references for all the special vote provisions, which I think you might have just mentioned, but I'm curious, under some of the special voting situations, I mean, the hire of a teacher that's related to a board member requires unanimous vote of the full board?
Yes, yes, it does. And that's in statute.
And how about, um, C, is that also in statute?
Yes. Um, termination of a continuing contract teacher requires a majority of the full board. Yes, the majority vote of the full board conducted by roll call, that's in statute as well. Um, I will state that the special voting situations, this section A through O, um, I'm gonna give full credit to Terry Morrow at the MSBA for, for helping me build this. Uh, he has some guidance document out there for school boards, incredibly helpful, incredibly useful. Normally, he, when, when you go to the board chair training, he chairs it as a kind of Excel spreadsheet sheet, sheet. I took that piece and I, and I put it into policy mainly because a lot of these special voting situations are something that you don't necessarily think of unless you go back and read, read it over and over, um, they don't really come to mind. Uh, so that, that's why I felt it was important to include the special voting situations in this policy, uh, and to be that specific. And the legal references that Donna was requesting are listed in the legal references. If you notice, there are a significant number of legal references and that is why.
Oh, on the bottom, okay.
Yes. Yep, and that, and that is why.
Mm-hmm.
So, and yeah, some of them, um, I don't ever expect to be applicable for the force like schools, like when it talks about, um, you know, what if you only have a single newspaper and somebody on the board of directors at the newspaper is also on the board of directors in the school board, this is how to proceed, but that's part of the legal guidance, so that's why it's in there.
Member Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion in the absence of Director Friedman that we work on the next two at the next meeting. We've gotten through two, we can table these two till the next time and hopefully Director Friedman will be available that evening.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any discussion on the motion to ta, to postpone these until March thirteenth? All right, seeing that, I only have one comment on that, um, March thirteenth, it's, it's not that it's that far, far away. We have, let me look. I have four other policies on deck for March thirteenth, but March thirteenth, we will also be discussing, uh, the renewal of the A and I plan or the, the new rules for A and I. And we will likely have some more affinity group, uh, advisors. There we go, that's the word I was looking for. On the schedule for that meeting, it has the potential to get long, uh, so I just want the board to be aware of that before they vote.
So that's our main meeting of the month. I'd like to keep these on the second meeting of the month, if possible.
Uh, we could do that as well, but then if we did that, we'd just have to do more volume. And the other caution I would have against that is they follow committee meetings and when they follow committee meetings, we tend to get pretty late.
True.
So, Member Haglund?
I would like just, we only have two more. They were on the agenda, been on the agenda this whole time, so I think, and they're not overly controversial things are the meeting minutes and the policy. I think we can get through them tonight, discussion and, so we can move forward and keep on, on schedule to work through these as we outlined.
That, that would be my preference as well, especially since there's minimal changes in twelve oh four and twelve oh five.
That's true.
Any more discussion on that?
Well, you have stated, Member Chair, that we're not in any hurry to get these done, correct?
Um, not necessarily, no. No, we just have a, a large deck to get through.
I know, okay.
All right, seeing no other discussion on the motion that was in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? No?
No.
All right, the noes have it, the motion fails. Do we have any more discussion on twelve oh three? Okay, seeing no more discussion on twelve oh three, we'll move to school board meeting minutes twelve oh four. As Donna stated, this is largely modeled after MSBA. The only real changes here, um, if we look at section three, letter B, um, the recording of minutes, or, uh, the recording of meetings, I'm sorry. B, three B, um, I think this whole, no, this whole section isn't new, there's just a, a couple of clauses. Clause number one, a reasonable effort to electronically record and live stream, all open meetings must be made at the school district's expense. Recordings of open meetings shall be made separately from the recordings of a closed meeting. That is a simple directive to do something we already do. Um, there is a section that I added in here after that, portions of a meeting that may violate appropriateness for general consumption by all audiences or that may be deemed as violations of law shall be removed from recordings and/or live streams as expeditiously, or as expediently, I'm sorry, as expediently as possible. A, a concern was brought to me on, on that point and I, and I think this is really valid and this is something that's important to keep in there. Um, there's always a possibility during public comment for somebody to come in here and share private student data or for somebody to come in here during public comment, make inappropriate comments or, um, directly threaten staff or to, uh, directly threaten a board member. That was my thought around section two there, is if this violates, um, you know, a school policy, it violates appropriateness, it's not generally consumable by, you know, everybody including our preschool kids. We want administration to go back and remove that from the video. We don't want that posted, we don't want that associated with the district. If we're sharing, um, private student data, we want the people who are running the live stream to cut the live stream and to prevent that from getting disseminated. We want, we want to protect our students and our staff in that way and I, I think that's a practice that they carry out anyhow. And the problem with policy a lot of times is you get so prescriptive that you back staff into a corner and, and you make it difficult for them to do their jobs. This, section two here was my, um, let them do their jobs, let them do what's right and proper and, uh, don't, don't handcuff them into, uh, to doing things that they shouldn't. And then the other thing that I added in here was that if the recording of a meeting, uh, I'm trying to remember specifically where that was. Oh, um, section five there just talks about what happens if there's some sort of a technical glitch and, you know, say we lose our internet or say that the streaming computer goes down or, or the audio cuts out. Um, that's just being prescriptive and saying, if it's a, if it's recognized that there's a problem, bring it to the chair, the chair will bring it to the board and the board will decide what to do. Um, that way the chair's not making a decision unilaterally and neither is administration on what is and what is not being broadcast. So that, that's the biggest change to twelve oh four over MSB model, MSBA model. And it's basically a, we're doing this anyway, we're sharing it with the public, we want them to be able to tune in and consume this information as much as they can, but at the same time, we want to be, we want to be realistic. Technical glitches happen, we want a clause in there for that. We want to keep it appropriate, we want to have a clause in there for that. So that's the only real change. Member Castle?
So with live streaming, do we have a delay so that the opportunity is there to kill the audio?
We do not. Okay, we, we do not at this point, but that is something that, uh, administration would definitely have the option of, of doing is implementing a delay if they felt that was appropriate. I did not want to get prescriptive in here, um, because I like giving, uh, administration and staff the ability to, to do their jobs with the discretion. If they feel a delay would be appropriate, then, um, I, I think they can implement that and if not.
So we don't currently have live comment from anybody who would be watching the live stream, so there's really no reason to actually livestream it. It could be recorded, examined, if need be, and then put out later.
And this actually addresses that as well. And please don't think I'm pushing back on you here on that one, but I do state that recordings of open meetings with the exception of portions subject to section two, which is, uh, closed meetings, shall be classified as public data and posted online for public consumption by district staff when available, no later than seven days following a jurma. So it gives them a week to, to post it. Um, I do rec, I, I do state that we make a reasonable effort to record and live stream. Director Jacobson, does that feel appropriate? I'll, I'll put you on the spot.
Um, you know, I would say we should probably take some time just to make sure from a technical standpoint that we can do what it is that the board is talking about here.
Okay.
The thing that comes to mind for me is the amount of time it would take to catch and then remove content that we would, then also probably want to pull together and have a couple of people come to some level of agreement, whether it's appropriate or not. Uh, so that might take a little bit of time, so I think that would be something we just want to keep in mind here if we consider this particular part of the policy. Again, this is, you're having some discussion here tonight, no decisions being made, but something, just things that we could not.
If I were to send you the current policy as proposed, is that something you'd be able to review with your staff and, and just check it for reasonableness? Yeah?
Sure.
Okay, I will send that to you. All right, any other questions, comments on twelve oh four? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to twelve oh five, school board, school board meetings. This one is, um, essentially untouched. This is an MSBA model two oh five.
That one's perfect.
This is extremely perspect, uh, prescriptive by state law. If you look at the last page, you will see it is nothing but cross-references to model policies, laws, um, legal opinions, case laws. It is exhaustive.
Member Chair?
Yes.
Um, again, referring to Director Friedman, she is saying that under twelve oh five here, uh, four A one, this is not part of the model, she's saying?
Oh, yes. All right, I stand corrected.
It's a tiny little.
I added a section to this.
Four A one?
Let me pull it up.
It says, um, it says, all meetings of the school board shall be opened with a call of. of order, followed by 'All present members encouraged to respectfully recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America.'"
Yes.
And she is just saying, "The board is absolutely able to choose to open meetings with a pledge, but cannot require all members to recite it."
And her comment is based on the original language of that policy, where it had written, "All present members required to respectfully recite," so I changed that to encouraged.
But again, it is not part of the model, is that what you're saying?
Nope, nope, that is not part of the model.
Okay, because at first you said it's all.
I thought it was, I do stand corrected. There were quite a few policies, I'm gonna look here. Oh, I did add one other section here, going back to those comments, section four A two A, A. Oh, the special meetings. So, she had a section in here, again, this was an old language again, about, "The special meeting is limited to the topics included in the notice." This is actually taken out of statute. If the school board were to call a special meeting, say, for example, a special meeting to allow the consumption of alcohol at Schumacher Field, I reflect back on that, because I do remember that. Anytime a special meeting is called in state statute, the agenda that is proposed is not amendable. The agenda that proposed is fixed in stone, as soon as you note it, you give the public notice that it is not a regular school board meeting, and it is a special meeting, nobody can amend that. And I included that language in this policy, again, kind of as a reminder, like the special voting situations, because sometimes you don't always reflect on state law, but you'll go back and you'll say, "Okay, we are calling a special meeting for this specific topic, what does that mean?" We can refer back to our policy very quickly and go, "Oh, that's right, we're adopting an agenda, there are no amendments allowed to this, there is no new business allowed to that, there are no," I don't believe, per state statute, you can even give previous notice of a special meeting, so that's what's being called out in that section.
I did have notes on this one that I forgot about. So, model policy two oh three, operation of the school board governing rules?
Going back to two oh three?
Yeah.
Okay, going back to twelve oh three.
And then, not included is MSBA and MASA's two oh three point five, which is kind of, what I liked when I observed in other districts was, it's a meeting agenda, kind of gives an example of what we follow.
Oh, yes, yep, and we actually do utilize the framework proposed in two oh three point five.
Okay.
In the generation of our agenda, and that's based on just a standard practice of how we've done it for several years.
And then, what were your thoughts on two oh three point six consent agendas?
I felt it was redundant with Robert's Rules of Order myself.
Okay.
That was my feeling on it, which is why I didn't propose it, is, I mean, it does lay it out pretty clearly, but it was redundant with the rule book. All right, any other questions on, really, any of these policies, two oh, well, we were on twelve oh three there, but on twelve oh five specifically that we just talked over? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?